All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our City Council meeting Tuesday, February 20th. We will start with a roll call.
Mayor Kayla Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Train.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Roshino Farrell.
Here.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Gupta, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Great, thank you. I will read the land acknowledgement. "We acknowledge that we are in the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial." First up, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we will start with a public comment in the room, and then we move to Zoom. Okay, first, we have Upinder. If you'll just state your name, your city of residence, and then you'll see the three-minute timer. Thank you.
Okay, now it is. Name is Upinder Dinsa. Address 215 East Lake Samamish Parkway Southeast, Samamish, Washington, right here by the lake. I have been a resident of Samamish for a long time. I know many of you have come here several times. I also invest a lot in the city of Samamish, as a developer or the builder. Unfortunately, I have seen the permitting process and the response time and communications go down significantly over the last 2013. I used to be able to come right in here, stand up there, familiar faces are right here. They have all worked with me. I know them, pretty much everybody by their names. But now I made six trips randomly. Just came here, asked for five names, and not one time did I get anybody in the building. So the point is that we need to have at least some service, especially for small builders. Now, a large builder can have massive staff and all that, that's okay. But small people who are going to be working over here, my project, which I submitted in early July, it has taken seven months, and it is still stuck at ground zero after I had paid $952. It was wrong payment because I was guided to different. You can't talk to anybody. There's no human being that you can say, hey, how to resolve it. And, Madam Mayor, I'd like to share this also with you, that on January 3rd, I called the office to invite you and sent an email also. To this date, I haven't heard back. And that was for a major event that we worked very hard on for almost a decade. And I wanted Samamish to be present in Seattle when the new council office, Consulate Office of India, has opened up in Seattle. This is after three decades of effort. We have opened it. The entire city of Seattle was lit up in India's flag colors. I wanted Samamish to be recognized there. So I invited you, sent email, everything, never heard back. So there is some problem with the way the communication works. I called the city, got your number. Would have been wonderful. There must have been 17 mayors, congressmen, congresswomen, everybody was there. Beautiful evening event, all held up. My only, you know, desire in there was that Samamish City should be recognized. I was also instrumental in helping bring about the trail issues between the city and the King County. So all I'm asking is, when you review your budgets, I have gone over each one of your retreats. I read it, I listen to the tapes. I know there's an issue between budget and expenses. I ran $6 billion company, Raytheon Division, so I understand how that works.
Thank you.
But I think having somebody at the front to at least answer simple questions, so it doesn't delay into four, five, six, nine months, would be absolutely appreciated.
Thank you. Lisa?
Hi. Lisa Steele, Samamish, Washington. I just wanted to retouch. Thank you for letting me come and share some thoughts. I wanted to touch back in on something I mentioned the last time I spoke about the city newsletter. I think especially since we don't have a newspaper here anymore, it's, in my humble opinion, it's such a great opportunity to be able to share more with all of the Samamish residents. They get, every single resident gets that awesome newsletter, and it's really lovely right now, but I think it could be so much more practical and helpful. So if you remember, I presented about HB 1799 with the composting and the styrofoam bans coming up, and I presented at the Sustainability Committee as well. And that is what I wanted to mention as an example for our great newsletter, that there could be with the focus that Samamish now has on climate and sustainability, that could be a column where there is, for example, you may or may not know that all Samamish residents can go down to Recology in Issaquah with Threadcycle. Threadcycle is literally any textile from a ripped-up old sock to a ripped-up t-shirt to a fabric rugs, and Samamish residents can take that for free, but almost nobody knows that. So there could be an example in a column of practical tips for the month. Maybe community members could help write it, or staff. And the other thing that I think would be a great part of the newsletter would be more, I know there are city services, but I'm thinking more in terms of, I have helped for quite a few years now with Habitat for Humanity Community. I hope you all know where that is on 228th, and also somewhat with some of the Section 8 housing people. And, I mean, I'm just me. I just really like to try to help and finding things out on my own. But if there was something in the newsletter about, here's the food bank hours, it's in Issaquah, but if you have children in the Samamish school system, they can go there. Anybody with a Samamish, that's not true, most Samamish zip codes, people can go there. So there would be great if somebody on city staff would almost be a person that could help with that, but if nothing else, it could maybe be in the newsletter as some really practical information. I love all of the work in the last few months around sustainability and climate, and the climate pledge, and links to the website parts. I think the website is getting a lot better, but people are busy, and they don't, if you just say, oh, it's on the website, I think having something right in front of them that they stick on their fridge, that, you know, that they forget about, but it shuffles around in the paper, and they actually have it there, and it gets really practical every month with different tips. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Denise?
Denise Steele-Darnell, 2121 200th Avenue in Samamish. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. I know we've talked a lot about the Town Center already in the past meetings, and I just want to touch on a couple things. I know that all of you on the City Council are sort of inheriting what past city councils have done and the decisions they've made. And for many of you, you're pretty new to all of what's happened, right? And I just want to, again, reiterate the fact that I am just representing, I feel, a lot of people in Samamish who feel concerned when they start hearing that it will be 120 acres of development. And I would like to challenge you to be different, maybe, than the previous city councils who started all of this with the Town Center, and really get out there and find out how people are feeling. I would love to do some community meetings, maybe in Clohaunee and Trosacks, because those are really big neighborhoods, to tell them exactly what's going on. I've been helping to advertise the open house on the 28th, so I'm really glad about that. It didn't seem to make it into the newsletter, so again, I think not everyone's going to really know about it. But I do also feel like this idea of doing an advisory vote, someone was mentioning that to me, and I went back and looked, in 2012, the City Council did an advisory vote about the YMCA, and I vaguely remembered that. And that would be a great way to just really understand, how is everyone feeling? Because just like it shouldn't be my opinion, I don't feel it should just be the small group of people that can decide the finality of these 120 acres. I know that the developer lives out of town, he owns 80% of the land, but you can be in charge of what he does. You can say 50% of the trees need to stay, or we can only have four houses per one acre. It can be your decision, not his. And so I would love to get more of a majority opinion of what's happening. And since we don't have a newspaper, why not do an advisory ballot? I learned from the YMCA one that the City Council can actually be the one that puts in a resolution to ask for an advisory ballot, to get more information. And going back to the gentleman that spoke earlier, that would show how much you want to communicate with your community. I think it would be a really great PR, too, to show how interested you are in finding out about how everyone feels. And just back to the very beginning of your meeting, when you do the beautiful pledge about the Native American land and what we're sitting on right now, that's how I live and how I think you all live as environmentalists, as you're driving around, this, how would the Native Americans going way back feel about this land? And our decisions we're about to make have to be bigger than just what one developer wants. So I beg of you to let us include our whole community by having an advisory ballot. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, do we have anyone that signed up online?
We do.
Great, thank you.
Per the new reasonable accommodations, those who have pre-registered by 3 o'clock today, please raise your hand if you wish to give testimony. I'll unmute the pre-registered callers in the order they've raised their hands. You'll have three minutes to provide comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and city in which you live for the record. And I'll now unmute the first caller. Mr. Stickney, you can give comment.
Yeah, I don't think I'm on.
You're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry about that. Good evening, City Councilmembers. Paul Stickney, Samamish. My comment tonight is a sampler of four key ingredients for consensus solutions to citywide growth and Town Center. EI into E3, sound of silence, false premises, and richer. EI and E3. Samamish and Town Center growth have been rooted in EI in the past, and that's a lot of emotion and ideology and feeling, which is real. But E3 are emotions after going through what I call I1 and E1 and I2 and E2. I1 is getting complete information. E1 is evaluation of that information. I2 and E3 is reconsideration of one's emotional and ideological growth stance after having I1 and E1 info. E3 is how each person feels after reconsidering where they really are based on all the data and to see what's the best outcome for Samamish. Sound of silence. Our city has been silent on quantified internal housing needs for local needs and wants, for economic, demographic, and workforce cycle of life makeup, for cycle of life and generational. We've never contrasted radically different outcomes on virtually everything that makes up our city relative to meeting all part or none of shortage, lifetime, and legacy housing needs. Informed community input on this needs to inform council choices on housing supplies. I use the term premises in two ways. A house is one's premises, and assumptions and foundations to assess housing growth policies are also premises. Samamish housing supplies are false premises in that they don't even come close to meeting local needs over a cycle of life. In terms of assumptions or foundations, our new comp planned growth target, the housing needs assessment, and Town Center plan have some off-base false premises rather than authentic ones. Those should be corrected and those reconsidered. Richer. Reassessing overall city and Town Center growth from the E3 perspective has the opportunity to make our community far richer for residents, workforce, and the city, holistically and sustainably. Richer financially, richer quality of life, and in social fabric. My ask is to hold the land use decisions on city and Town Center, get the sound of silence information, get informed information and community input, and then consider appropriate changes to land use and Town Center for all Samamish. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
We have no other online public comment. Back to you, Mayor Clark.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next up, we have our consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to approve unless anyone has any comments or questions.
So moved. Second.
All right, for the consent, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, for our proclamations, first, we have Children's Dental Health Month with Councilmember Lamb.
This is a proclamation for National Children's Dental Health Month for February 2024. Whereas the future is, to a large measure, dependent on the good health of our children and families, and whereas good health can be achieved in part through good dental habits and oral health care learned early and reinforced through life, and whereas good oral health contributes to better nutrition, improved ability to concentrate, and improved school attendance, and whereas the city of Samamish is dedicated to a strong commitment to all children in our community through many early childhood and school programs, and whereas National Children's Dental Health Month is celebrated each February in order to raise awareness about the importance of good oral health. Now therefore, Kayla Clark, Mayor of Samamish, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim February 2024 to be National Children's Dental Health Month in the city of Samamish, and encourages all residents to join in the special observance.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Stewart, World Spay Day.
Thank you. Proclamation for World Spay Day, February 27, 2024. Whereas pets provide companionship to 65% of U.S. households, and whereas 2.4 million healthy and adoptable cats and dogs are put down in animal shelters each year due to a lack of critical resources and public awareness. And whereas nearly 90% of pets living in poverty and 98% of community feral and stray cats are unaltered, and whereas spaying and neutering has been shown to dramatically reduce the number of animals who are put down in animal shelters. And whereas World Spay Day calls attention to the problem of homeless pets across the country by promoting spay and neuter as a way to prevent pet overpopulation, as well as save lives, and whereas veterinarians, national and local animal protection organizations, and private residents continue to work together to advocate for spaying and neutering of pets and community cats through World Spay Day in the United States and throughout the world. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that February 27, 2024 is designated World Spay Day. Mayor Clark, on behalf of the City Council, is calling upon the people of Samamish to observe the day by having their own pets spayed or neutered, or by sponsoring the spaying or neutering of a pet in need. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, now we have our new business, very exciting news, for our collective bargaining with our federation union. I don't know if Mark or Scott, who's starting off? Oh, Mark's there.
I'll just kill time a little bit while the team comes up to the table.
Awesome, thank you.
As the team gets set up, I just want to say a huge thank you to all those that have been involved from my perspective, those at the table, plus the person sitting to my right, and others on staff that Mark will talk about. But this has been a lot of work and a great process, and I'm really thankful for those that are sitting at the table for the great job that they did coming to the table as an equal partner to try to get to a positive outcome. So with that, hopefully, I've danced long enough for Mark to get set up, and I will turn it over to him. Mark, take it away.
You have, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm here this evening to get to share details, as Scott highlighted, of our bargaining with our AFSCME Local 1425 partners. There are a number of them from the executive board with me this evening, and hopefully we'll hear from a few of them in a little bit as well. The original agreement with AFSCME was signed in 2021. That agreement expired on December 31, 2023, and we have been operating under the status quo of that agreement until this agreement is ratified and approved. This is the first successor agreement between the parties, and it includes new bargaining team members on each side. For the union, the staff representative was Roger Mueller from AFSCME. Unfortunately, he isn't feeling well and wanted to be here, but he's not here this evening. Darcy Donovan, the union president, Joel King, the vice president, Kyler Craig, shop steward, and Evan Fisher, a shop steward. And I want to take an opportunity to say thank you very much. They were fantastic partners through this process, and even though we didn't always agree on every issue, it was really a good environment that we had to work through issues. On the city side, in addition to myself, Carrie Sand, the city attorney, Mung Franklin, the acting city HR manager, and Dan Johnson, the public works superintendent participated in negotiations. We had approximately 13 bargaining sessions over five months. The parties reached a tentative agreement on January 11 of 2024, and the union overwhelmingly ratified the temporary agreement on February 12, 2024. Some highlights of the agreement, this is a three-year agreement. The city is going to recognize a new holiday, Indigenous Peoples' Day, on the second Monday of October. There are two additional tiers of vacation accruals in the vacation accrual table at 15 years and at 25 years in order to help incentivize retention. And the city recognizes its remote work policy and process within the collective bargaining agreement. We will be shifting to the classification and compensation pay framework that was presented last year to council. For 2024, there's a wage increase of 8.6%, and the parties will continue to use the Seattle-Tacoma Bellevue CPIU June to June rolling four-year average for additional colas in the additional two years. For the wage increase in 2024, that's basically broken out by the 4% in place of the 2024 performance step increase, and 4.6% in cola, which is based on the Seattle-Bellevue-Tacoma CPIU for June to June. In addition to the collective bargaining agreement, there's a companion memorandum of understanding, and this is to address a past and future wage issue related to maintenance worker qualifications, reference operating city equipment. The union's ratified agreement and the MOU are before council now. There is a variance between the 2024 adopted budget and the contract cost of approximately $415,000, and we will be returning to council in the future for a budget amendment. I offer the recommended motion of I move to approve the ratified 2024-2026 collective bargaining agreement between AFSCME Local 1425 and Related Memorandum of Understanding, and direct the city manager to execute both on behalf of the city. And as I leave that for your consideration, I'd like to invite the union president, Darcy Donovan, to say a few words.
Mark, before Darcy starts, will you just pull your screen down for a moment, so?
Thanks. Thank you. Hello, my name is Darcy Donovan, president of our Local 1425 Union. I am joined tonight by Joel, with, tonight, by Joel King, our vice president, Evan Fisher, and Lisa Weir, both are shop stewards and executive board members. We're excited to be here to commemorate the council's approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the union and the city. As Mark described, getting this contract was a long process and took a lot of dedication and determination from both parties. I'm extremely proud of the effort put in by both the executive board, the contract committee members, and especially our bargaining team. The bargaining team consisted of Joel, Kyler Craig, Evan, Roger Mueller, and myself. This group not only spent 13 negotiating sessions working with the city's team, but spent several hours preparing for each session on personal time to ensure that we were prepared to represent our members. Their dedication and preparation paid dividends, and it shows in the contract. Beyond the bargaining team, I'd like to give a quick shout-out to our executive board and contract committee members who helped make this contract possible. A big thank you to Lisa Weir, Kurt Welch, Ben Benhart, Annalise Dyer, who's on the call tonight, thank you, Annalise, Jim Craig, Beth Carpenter, and Sheila Brooks. This group spent every Wednesday evening of their summer months helping to draft the proposal, and we couldn't have done it without them. And we couldn't, excuse me, we couldn't have gotten here today without them, thank you. I'd also like to thank the city's bargaining team. We spent many hours locked away, hammering out details and having hard conversations, but together, we were able to develop a strong contract that reflects the interest of both parties. I really appreciate working with each of them, and will even admit to, despite the long hours and hard work, we managed to have a few laughs and fun along the way. Lastly, I just want to say a big thank you to our membership. We sincerely hope this contract represents you as well, and appreciate the trust you put in us, thank you. This contract signifies an exciting new chapter as we work together to continue to make Samamish a great place to work. Thank you for your time.
Annalise, they nominated you to say something?
If I could, I'd just like to add a special thank you on behalf of both sides to Carrie Sand, who did a lot of document work in this process, sometimes on some extremely tight turnarounds. And it really helped us as we went through those sessions to get here where we are tonight on the timeline that we did because of the hard work that she did occasionally over a weekend. So on behalf of all of us that benefited from that hard work, thank you, Carrie.
No, that's great to know. Carrie does love working nights and weekends, so. Yeah, that is true. Councilmember Stewart?
If you can, I was gonna go ahead and make the motion. I just wanted to say thank you, thank you also for being here tonight, and I don't know who got the cupcakes, but probably someone great. So yeah, really appreciate all the work, because I know I've been part of two different federations, I've been part of two different unions, this one and what was the other one that's really popular, doesn't matter. But it's a really good union. I know you guys are, probably have done really proud work, and thank you for continuing and getting through it, and thanks to Scott and Carrie and Rachel and Mark, too. So thank you all. Does anyone else have anything for the motion? Yeah?
Mayor, just ever so briefly, I want to thank all the union members for coming here on their own time tonight. I really appreciate you being here in person, and I think it speaks a lot to your team that you're willing to come and be part of this tonight, so thank you.
WPEA, I just remembered it. Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, excellent. I move to approve the ratified 2024-2026 collective bargaining agreement with AFSCME Local 1425 and Related Memorandum of Understanding, and authorize the city manager to execute both on behalf of the city.
Second?
Okay, and if I can, just very briefly, I want to thank everybody, this is very exciting. I was here when the union was first formed and the first agreement, and I feel like this, from, at least from the cheap seats, this seemed to go much smoother, and I hope everyone's super happy with where we're at. So I'm excited, and I look forward to a great three years of executing under this agreement. Thank you.
All right, council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Great. Okay, so we're gonna take a 10-minute break, so we'll be back at 7:10 for some photos and probably handshakes, so thank you. Okay, we are coming back as we speak. All righty. Okay, so, next up with Audrey, we have our supplemental agreement for the design of East Lake Sammamish Shore Lane Road. Audrey, are you taking it right away?
Yes, we can go ahead and start.
Awesome. All right, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. So, the Public Works Capital Project Engineering Division is here this evening to present a supplemental agreement to an existing contract to complete design phase for the East Lake Sammamish Parkway Shore Lane Road reconstruction project, very lengthy title. This project rebuilds approximately 950 lineal feet of roadway, and it includes stormwater improvements, as Jed will present in his slide, slides in a few moments. This project, for a little bit of history, was added as a standalone project to the 2023 through 2028 Transportation Improvement Plan, or TIP, as well as the 2021 through 2022 budget, as well as this current budget cycle. Again, it's a standalone project and can be referenced and found in most of those documents as TR 109. Going forward, this project would fit into the city's street reconstruction program, which is a program in the 340 Fund. That's also described in our 2024 through 2029 TIP that systematically addresses public streets that have a poor or failed condition score, and those types of roads typically require a full street reconstruction or rebuild. So, presenting this contract supplemental agreement and providing a project status update is Jed Ireland, Senior Project Engineer. Greg Stamatiou, our Deputy Public Works Director, and myself are available for any questions. And Jed, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Well, thanks, Audrey. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'll just bring up the screen. Okay, so we're showing, right here, we're looking at a bird's eye view of the street at East Lake Sammamish Shore Lane, and the cross street is southeast 33rd Street. You can probably see on the image that there's Big Block Brewery and the mall that's there on the other side of the parkway. As Audrey said, the project is almost 1,000 feet long, and approximately half of it is paved over unsuitable subgrade material. There's peat moss, it's very spongy and wet, and there's a high groundwater, which is making, will make the rehabilitation a little bit more intensive than normal. There's also three existing outfalls on this street, but what we learned as we got into the design that one of them actually is for the residential development that's across the street, and two of the outfalls are actually private, they go over private property or privately owned, and we'll get into that a little bit with some photos. And right now, the budget is $922,000. Now, this is looking on the street, this is on the south end, looking to the north, and this serves about 13 homes. And you can see that the road is in really rough shape, you can see that there appears to be a trench on the left side, and that is for the forest main sewer. These homes have grinder pumps, and their sewer is actually heads up the street and then up into the parkway, where Sammamish Plateau water takes over from there. You can see that the road is in really rough shape, it appears to have not been maintained by King County at that time, although the residents and the utilities have made various pothole repairs and things of that nature. And you can also see that there are curbs and gutters, there actually is some catch, there are catch basins in some locations, but it has to be revamped. The curbs are not continuous, and so it's just kind of a, it's not a conforming street, although there is a nice park amenity that the private owners built on the right side, and you can see a little private path. This is the first outfall location we'll look at. This is between two neighbors, it roughly goes under the fence line, and it has an outfall, you know, that's above a, just above the lake, and this is privately maintained, and so this is the first one. You can see the catch basin is here. Our project will be modifying this because we'll be proposing to put in treatment to deal with the road runoff. And then also, this pipe has separation and a lot of issues that need to be corrected before it can be brought into city maintenance. This is outfall location number two, and you can see that, you can see the sandbags there. This one actually goes under the house, it actually goes under the garage to a outfall that's above the ordinary high watermark, and so, you know, to be maintained by the city, we're gonna need to redirect this one and have a proper outfall that can be maintained and not going through a house. And so, this will be the second location that we'll need to correct. Here's a breakdown of the figures, the budget is $922,000, and you can see the expenses here, you can see that the design we're asking for is $87,551, and the construction estimate right now is $643,000. And of course, as we get into the 60% design, as we get up to that for the stormwater outfall, this may adjust, but there are factors in there that we're expecting, hopefully this will be, this will cover it. So, you can see that we're pretty close to the budget there. We will be coming again to council, again, for, when we take this out to bid, and we will come back with a construction contract. So, council will be able to see this again. Here's a quick breakdown of the schedule. This was shown in the agenda bill that we're looking at construction for probably next summer, or for summer of 2025. The reason being is that because we have a number of permitting processes that probably preclude us building in the small window where we have dry soils under the road and where we can overexcavate, and also make the paving window. So, probably because of permitting, we are going to be constructing this in June of 2025, that's our proposal. And with that, here's a proposed motion, and we can now take questions.
Great, thank you. I think this has been a long time coming, I think I was invited to see this summer of 2021. I'm sure other people have seen it too. So, yeah, really appreciate this work. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the team? Councilmember O'Farrell?
Yeah, I just want to be, you know, I'm not quite sure about the, I know kind of where it is in Sammamish, but is this on a private road? Or is this on a public road?
This is a public road, it's public right-of-way.
Because one of the signs in the photograph said it was a private road, so I was just curious as to, you know, are the homeowners contributing to the cost of this project, or is this purely city funding the whole thing?
This is city funds, because it's public right-of-way.
It's in a public right-of-way, okay. And then, just, when I see, when you were showing one of those outfalls that's actually running under a house, was the house built before the outfall was built, or was the outfall built before the house? It's interesting that such a thing happens where you're allowed to build a house over a particular utility, was that something that's, and forgive me for going back old information that may already have been agreed upon, but this happened probably before I came on council. But is this something that is a residue from unincorporated King County days, or is that kind of what we are faced with at this point? Because that's just...
Yeah, it's leftover. It's unusual, it's leftover from King County. And of course, as time goes on, all the unusual circumstances that were done under King County, we discover them. This is a case where, there are a few roads like this where the, some of the features weren't built to the city standard or the King County standard at that time, and they didn't appear to be maintained. I don't know when the storm drain was put in, but it could have been that it was an old drain that was just repurposed for the housing development and somehow got through.
Okay.
So, it doesn't meet, it doesn't meet the standard for a public infrastructure, and that's why it has to be...
And so, the problem we're trying to solve is that that particular area floods when we have a lot of rain, is that kind of what happens? I saw there were sandbags in the picture, so is there a flooding issue that we're trying to solve for here?
The issue is the road, essentially, there doesn't appear to be an extensive amount of flooding in this area, and so the system appears to have been maintained or was adequate for most of the residents. It really comes down to the road needing to be reconstructed, just because of the subgrade, and that it hasn't been maintained for a long period of time.
So, this is a road surface issue, not a stormwater problem?
Correct. What really brought this to the front was, I believe, because the residents identified it as a road that was not being maintained by first the county, and so now it's our right-of-way.
I see. So, and is the road, sorry, go ahead, Audrey, beg pardon.
Oh, if I may, just the road has a condition pavement scoring of a failed condition, and as Jed pointed out, due to the poor subbase of the road, we actually have to reconstruct or rebuild the entire road, so that brings into this, some of the stormwater funding, so it's being funded also at a 438 because there's being stormwater work that we'll be doing, and then because of the regulations now are much more stringent than they were when this road was first, you know, put in, and because we are digging into the subbase of the road, we will have to require, we are required to put in stormwater treatment as well.
Okay.
And because the drains in the lake.
Okay. I was just curious that, you know, that it's a public street that we're working on and not a private one? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone else have anything? Or would like to make the motion? Yeah, Councilmember Lamb?
I'd like to authorize the city manager to execute a contract supplement with Skilling's Incorporated for the design of the East Lake Sammamish Parkway Shore Lane Road reconstruction in the amount of $87,551.
I'll second that. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, well, thank you, Audrey, and Doug, and Greg, and Jed, thanks so much.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor.
All righty. Is Mike online? So, next up, we do have our discussion for the community survey overview. Thank you for the end slide there. Yeah. Hey, Mike, we'll pass it on to you.
Hey, council, thank you. If you'll just give me a moment, I'll get set up here with my PowerPoint. Okay. Hopefully that's showing in the presenter view and not in the slide viewer, can you just confirm that for me? Oh, no.
I know.
Well, we'll roll with it, it'll still work. I appreciate you letting me know. Good evening, council, my name is Mike Suggs, Supervising Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. I'm here this evening to provide a quick overview of the community survey prior to us launching it in early next month. This presentation is largely informational, however, there is an opportunity for input if desired on the custom questions that we will touch on later in this slide deck. This survey is on the city's 2024 work plan, and you may recall that we touched on this work plan item briefly as part of the discussion at the retreat earlier this month. And so, we'll start off with the why we're doing this work, and there are a few reasons for surveying community sentiment on a regular basis. Those would include that it helps us to monitor trends in community opinion over time and help us to understand what we're doing well and where we need to focus our time more intensely. The results can be used to measure the city's performance as well as informed budget discussions, the variety of planning projects that we work on, and to show whether work being done on the council's goals is actually having an impact. And last but not least, it shows us where we stand among cities in the region and the nation through benchmarking. And so, the city has a firm on board named Polco, and they conducted their national community survey for hundreds of cities across the country, as well as regionally in cities like Iskwa and Mercer Island. The survey covers 10 areas of community livability, and that would include things like mobility, safety, natural environment, inclusivity, and others. The fact that they conduct this survey for so many cities means that they have an extremely large database by which we can compare our results, and we did use the same exact survey tool in 2018 and 2016, meaning that we will be able to go back and see how our results in 2024 compare to the results six and eight years ago. The survey will go out to 3,000 randomly selected households, and it'll be available via paper copy or online through a unique URL for each household. Materials, including both the invitations that get sent out as well as the surveys themselves, we translated in Spanish, simplified Chinese, and Hindi, corresponding with our most frequently spoken languages other than English. Polco ensures that the results are representative of the community by oversampling multifamily housing or other specific demographics and statistically weighting the survey data so that we're capturing a broad cross-section, and so that everyone has the opportunity to participate. After we launch the statistically valid piece of the survey, Polco will open a separate survey link for any community member who wishes to take it. And we are looking, as I mentioned, to launch the survey next month, and we can expect the results in May. The draft survey is included as exhibit one to the agenda bill tonight. It includes standard questions that can be used to benchmark Sammamish to its past results as well as to other communities. Exhibit two includes these standard questions organized into each of council's goals, and what this is intended to do is show the types of information that we'll be able to track for each of council's goals to show whether progress is being made in improving community sentiment. As an example, this slide shows the types of information and questions related to trust and transparency, and ask things like rating the survey taker's confidence in Sammamish government and the job that we are doing in welcoming resident involvement and being open and transparent with the public, things like that. And this isn't an exhaustive list on the screen, you can see that in exhibit two. So, what you can see here is that this goal is including many questions that very closely address council's goal of trust and transparency. However, what we saw were there were a few goal areas that weren't adequately addressed by the standard questions alone, and that's where we lead into the next few slides here, which are our custom questions. So, we have the ability to ask as part of our package that we went with, with Polco, to ask about a half page of custom questions. And for the goals where there wasn't enough information related to what council is trying to achieve, we went ahead and worked with Polco to design questions that better get at what council is trying to achieve, and those areas include housing, environment, and fiscal sustainability. We've made full use of the space that we have available for these custom questions. As I said, it's about a half page. These are shown as questions 13 through 17 in exhibit one, and again, I'll show them on the following slides. So, I just wanted to note that there really isn't room to add additional questions beyond what we have, as we have to stay within this allotted space, so just wanted to make that clear. And then, looking at our first set of questions here is related to the environment, questions 13 and 14. The first one here seeks to understand at a high level if residents have the information that they need to implement sustainability practices at home. We heard from council that you want the city to be a source of information on sustainability, and through this question, we can better understand if our communications are impactful. Question 14 asks for residents to prioritize the city's efforts on sustainability in the categories that you can see there on the screen. This will help us understand residents' priorities for the main topic areas in our climate action planning effort. For the housing goal, we have two draft questions. The first one here is another high-level question asking for the resident to indicate their level of support for diverse and affordable housing options in the city. Based on what we see as the sentiment in response to this question, we can help to focus our education and outreach on the work that we're doing to increase these housing options in the city. The second question asks residents to indicate their support for taking various actions to increase diverse and affordable housing in the city, understanding that housing is understanding that housing, as we talked about at the retreat, is largely driven by market forces. And the response to this question will help council to determine where to focus efforts to increase these housing types. And last but not least, we have one question related to fiscal sustainability. It asks residents to rate their support for a variety of actions relating to long term fiscal sustainability. We heard a lot of interest from council on this topic in the pre-survey that you all took ahead of the retreat. So what we're trying to do with this question is get at information that we would need to know to understand what actions have the most community support in that area. The last slide here, you know, as mentioned previously, we expect our results in May. And those will come in a few different forms when we receive them. The first thing council will see is a presentation from our consultant, Polco. We will also receive a comprehensive written report outlining the results and insights. And I think one of the most interesting pieces of this work is we will have a dashboard that's built in Tableau reflecting what's in the written report that we can actually share out publicly. And several communities have used this information as the dashboard kind of for the city generally. And staff think it's a good way to show progress towards council's goals and priorities in a way that's easily accessible as well as digestible for the community. And in your packet, at the very end of the agenda bill is a link to an example of both the written report and also the digital dashboard. So that's all I have for now. Turn it back over from there, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Mike, and thank you for putting together these questions. And I'm really glad that you split them out at the end into our categories of goals. I'm really excited also to get back on like the two year cycle of these. So, Councilmember Lamb?
Hey, Mike, thanks for the presentation. I had a couple of comments on the custom questions. For number 16, could we add, it says it's largely driven by market forces. Could it read zoning regulations and market forces? And later on in that same sentence, it says to increase the diversity and affordability of housing. Can we take that one sentence or that those few words, increase the diversity and affordability of housing, and use that in number 15? So it would read, please indicate to what degree you would support or oppose increasing the diversity and affordability of housing options in Samamish. I just want the two to be consistent because I think affordable housing is, it's different than affordability of housing or housing affordability.
So I just have one question. Are we wordsmithing here, Scott and Mike? Is that what? I don't, I just want to make sure. Or if this is already set, some questions are set.
So I'll let Scott respond, but I just want to say briefly that we did work with Polco, who is, you know, kind of the survey professional to develop these questions. So I think largely, you know, they're in a way that makes sense and is asked in a way that ensures that we get a statistically valid result. But that's not to say that we can't go back to Polco and make some smaller tweaks. Scott, did you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that that covers it. I I think it's trying to get at, and I appreciate what the council members are saying. I think it's trying to get at something slightly different. And I understand what you were saying, council member. I think it's the difference of whether you support or oppose even the notion of it. And then the next level would be what things would you, if you do support, what things would you want to, you know, see? Support or not support for if we were, the city was actually to take action on something. And I think that's how they're laid out to be.
So I'm not clear whether or not you can make those tweaks because I do see a difference between housing affordability and affordable housing.
I think there are two different questions.
Yeah, they are two different questions. So I was just asking, can we use the same verbiage for both? So it would read, increase the diversity and affordability of housing for both 15 and 16.
Would we need head nods for this consistency if we're changing things now?
Can we get all the feedback first and then?
Yeah. I can continue, I just had one other comment. For number 13, so I wasn't clear when I first read it. And Mike said this during the presentation, that that there seemed to be consensus among council that people didn't have the information. So when I read that sentence, how do you feel, like, how prepared do you feel? It didn't say anything about, do you have the information? So I would, I would think if if it's about information, it should include that because otherwise it can be, are you unprepared because you have a lack of, because it's just costs too much? Or because there's no other, like, options that you could have? Like, for example, in multifamily, you can't reduce waste because you don't have composting options. So if it if it is about information, it should include, do you, how do you feel prepared? Do you have enough information to implement sustainability practices? And that's all I have.
Did you have anything after that, Scott? Do you want to go through the hands?
Mayor, I think we can go through all of them and then you all can, unless you'd like me to respond to that one, which I'm happy to.
No, I think it's good. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I, if you can go back to question 15, I I agree, I think. And again, I appreciate, you know, taking this back to the Polco. But I do think that diverse and affordable housing has a particular connotation. And I'm not sure that that's what we're actually going for. I think we're talking about having housing affordability and diversifying housing options for the community, which I think is quite different than the connotation when you just say affordable housing. And so I do like the way it's worded in 16 and think it would be important to align those to say housing affordability. Because when you talk about housing affordability, people think about, yeah, my kids can't afford houses. When you think about affordable housing, people start thinking instantly about, you know, low income housing and subsidizing housing, which may be somewhat part of it, but is not the complete picture. So I would, I would agree with those changes. Thanks.
Deputy, no. Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, thank you. I have some feedback. I don't necessarily have solutions, so I'll just go through what I thought. For question 14, I wasn't entirely sure about the difference between, or I guess the definition of sustainable transportation. From my understanding of the vehicle miles traveled per capita reduction, that is only counting emissions, trips that are generating emissions. So more electric cars would be reflected there and maybe not under sustainable transportation. So is that more multimodal transportation? Is that a more appropriate way to get our point across? I don't know, that was just what I thought when I read that. For question 16, under, after market forces, I would, I would suggest adding something like, and that no single action or strategy may prove wholly effective. Because when I read that, my first thought was if regulatory mandates are listed as an option, and I can just say, I want that to be our solution, I might list, I might prioritize everything else much lower and not understanding that that's not the, we can't just do that and reach the outcomes that I think we're trying to reach. For question 17, this, it might just be a me thing. When it says controlling city expenditures, the suggestion seems to be that city expenditures, which otherwise be out of control, which I don't, I understand that limiting expenses is a strategy. But I I'm sure Polco knows better than I do. That was just my first thought when I read that. And I think I I was also not sure under ensuring expensive infrastructure projects are financed over time, is that referring to like a capital bond? Which I understand, but I maybe didn't fully understand that when I read the the text that was presented. So that's just my feedback. Thanks.
We're looking at each other. So Mike or Scott, do you have responses to that? Or do you want to, Deputy Mayor Howe, do you want to go?
I was just going to ask a kind of a general question around the creation of the questions because part, part of the thing that we struggle with sometimes as a council is that we know too much and tend to read too much into some of these questions. The people answering these in terms of general public do so very quickly if they do it at all. And they have a gut reaction and they finish the question, off they go. So the 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 structure of the questions is very intentional. And so I don't actually struggle with the language being used, even though it sounds vague. Even though when we say expensive infrastructure, people could think, well, what are they talking about? You know, you know, is that a bypass? Is that a, you know, highway? What are they talking about? So it's, but not, you can, if done correctly, it shouldn't matter, is my point. Because people go through and they go, yeah, I care about the balanced budget. I don't care about city services. And they will rate accordingly. So I'm not too worried about the language here. What I would love to know is if these are structured in the same way as other cities have structured these types of questions. So there's some consistency again. So as we go towards comparing them year over year, if we're able to, you know, track, you know, because Iskwa probably has something similar. But I don't know that they do. So I'd like to just make sure that we're able to still kind of compare a little bit of apples to maybe a similar type of apple. Just, just again, to help just kind of feed our, you know, feed information. You're, you're going to get trending. You're not going to get hard data about how many affordable houses people want in Samamish. And I'd also love to know, is there a link somewhere on our website that points us to the old survey? So that people could look at it now for, now? Or would you, you know, would you show that now? Or would you be afraid that would poison the well?
Yeah, those are great questions, Deputy Mayor Howe. I may address those, I think, when we were creating these custom questions. We did ask Polco for examples from other communities that have asked similar questions on this topic. So they are, I think, based very similarly on some of those. However, the wording is not going to be exactly the same. And what we're trying to get at is not exactly the same. So unfortunately, we won't be able to benchmark the custom questions. This is really just more for us to be able to understand this. And assuming we ask the same or similar questions in the future, we can benchmark ourselves in the future to what we've got in the past. But as in terms of benchmarking with other communities, we won't. We'll do that for custom questions. As far as I'm aware regarding your inquiry about the old survey, we, I do not believe we have that on the website right now. I would just say, you know, at this point, it probably makes more sense to wait until the results come in for this survey because what it will do is show all the past results for all these questions and kind of where we're standing now. So you'll be able to see that all in one place.
Thanks for that. I would appreciate the link to that, though, for myself.
Sure. Absolutely, we can send that out to council.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Yeah, I have to agree with Deputy Mayor Howe. I'm not really in favor of changing the words of any of the questions on the survey. I realize that there are professionals who write survey questions and they're written in a particular way because they're trying to get to a particular piece of information. And they are also trying to link it up with previous information from previous years. And as they said in the presentation, relating it to questions from other cities. So we can compare the data realistically. So maybe in changing one question because we think it might solve one problem, we may end up creating another. So I like the survey as it is. I would not be in favor of changing words tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Treen, do you have something before we go to second rounders? Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think what I heard you say, Mike, just for clarification, is that these custom questions are not ones that we would be able to compare with other cities because these are specifically for us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I I do, I guess the question to the council on like questions 15 and 16 are, are we trying to find out if people are in favor of building more affordable housing options? Or only if people want affordable housing? Because if you ask the random person on the street what they think affordable housing means, they're going to say low income subsidized housing. Okay. All right. I will say on question 17, asking if we should have balanced budgets, it's not legal for the city to pass a budget that isn't balanced. So I'm not sure why we would even ask that question. But anyway.
Councilmember Lamb?
I appreciate what Councilmember Howe and O'Farrell are saying. But to me, there is a clear difference between affordable housing and housing affordability. And they're very different. And to the layperson, I do think there's a negative connotation to affordable housing. And that is not the goal of this. The goal is to get accurate information. And I don't think that having the words affordable housing is going to get us what we want. And that is not the goal. And the goal is to to be as specific as possible.
So it seems like we're stuck on a couple of these, Mike. I am also not in favor of changing the words unless Polco says, you know, this is a great idea. Because I have never created a survey, well, that's a lie. I've done Survey Monkey one time. But I do not know how to do this. I do not know what this is supposed to, you know, bring up in somebody and what it's supposed to elicit from them. So if affordable housing is a negative connotation, maybe that's what they're trying to do. So I don't know, Scott, or Scott and Mike, I guess, if you want to see what Polco says about these couple of changes. But the only thing I do hesitate, if we have almost 15 and 16 sounding the same, at least that last half, that's my only concern, is that maybe we just need to take one out. If it's like the whole second half is the exact same wording. So I don't know if anyone else has any other thoughts or questions or when this would be coming back to us, Mike?
Yeah, I think that's a, you bring up a good point that, you know, we should probably bring all this feedback over to Polco and see what they would recommend as the experts in this case. On your second point, the intent was not for this to come back to council. This was just trying to let you know about what the process is going to look like and then run these custom questions by you all for any feedback. And then we would go forward and, you know, get everything ready to to start launching this.
The, excuse me. The the follow up to that, council is, what we might suggest is that we take the input, we turn it over to Polco and let them make the final call as the experts and move forward with that. And if they change it, great. And if they don't, I think the question would be, is council okay if they don't? They say, no, it's actually, we've set it up the way it is. And I think that's for you all tonight. We we would just need to know before we do that, if that's the way you want to proceed.
Councilmember Treen?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm also good if Polco decides. Councilmember Lamb and Stewart?
I'd like to, regardless, I'd like to hear what Polco says, what the rationale is, if they decide not to change it.
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're happy to share that out.
Yeah. And thank you for your work on this, Mike. Like I said, I'm super excited to have some data and things that, and maybe we can build one of those dashboards Councilmember Stewart's been talking about. Be really nice to have at least, like you said, some trends. So, yeah, thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. As mentioned, I will send out that old survey or the previous surveys to you all. And then, as mentioned, we will follow up with what Polco comes back with. So appreciate your time.
Great, thank you. All right, Scott, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor, I just have a very brief one. I want to remind council that Congresswoman Schreier is joining our senior services on Monday at 11:30. We've noticed that. So all council members are welcome to join us. They, the Congresswoman was invited by some folks in the senior community to come. So this is more of a just being there to say hi. And she is interested in hearing what the the ISES folks have to say about the service they're providing. So just want to remind council about that and say, we're excited to have the Congresswoman join, join us. And I think it's a great opportunity to show off all the great work that's been happening at our senior services. So if you're able to make it, we'd love to see you. And if not, we'll happily share out what that was like at the next meeting.
Awesome. And you and Rachel are going to be there?
Yes.
Great, cool. Thank you. Councilmember O'Farrell?
Yeah, I just wanted to let council know that Councilmember Gupta and I attended at the YMCA there on the 10th of February, so almost two weeks ago, at the Y, the Samamish friends launched their grand opening of their pickleball for all. at the Y, the Samamish Friends launched their grand opening of their pickleball for all. So it's for fifty-five plus. It's free. It's every Saturday, I believe, from nine till twelve, I think it is, at the CWU. This is funded by a grant that Samamish Friends had received from King County Parks via Councilmember Sarah Perry. And we were there to kind of see all that come to fruition, I said, and then a couple of meetings over the summer when they were putting all this together. So it was great to see that. The Y are the facilitators of it. I think the first, on the first Saturday of every month, they provide instruction for the first hour. So if you want to go and learn how to play pickleball, the Y will teach you. They will also provide the paddles and the balls too, so you don't have to come with any equipment. You don't have to be a member of the Y. This is free. So yeah, so get out there and play pickleball. Thank you.
All right, does anyone else have a council report? Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, I just had the privilege of going to the Flower and Garden Show on Sunday, and at four o'clock, the Wildlife Federation made a presentation and then honored volunteers from several cities, and Samamish was honored. And Jan Byrd and Sharon Steinbiss represented the city very well, and it was, it was really cool. Free book and signing too was given to the volunteers, so that was really good of the presenter.
Yeah, that's great. Two of our Samamish powerhouses right there. Yeah. All right, does anyone else have anything? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, good evening. Thanks, everyone.